Kenny Cochran, as we knew would, brought his letter of resignation in about eleven o'clock today. And since he's been sworn in as an elected official for the county, he could not serve on two elected positions. So he brought his letter today and we have it in his file. Kennedy was a good councilman. I hated to give him up, but you know, he's moved on to a position of importance for sure. And being a county commissioner takes in a lot of territory and I'm sure he'll do a good job. Rodney's got three items today for discussion and consideration. And I'm gonna let you take them in the order that you'd see fit Rodney and we'll get started on our meeting today. And some of these have to do with services, some of these have to do with rates, some of these have to do with personnel. So we'll just let you take them in the order you see fit.
I'll do the shortest one first.
Okay.
I think it's better. Oh, the mayor was questioned about running a water line on Berry Hill Road. I've looked at this, don't know if y'all are familiar where Berry Hill Road is. Berry Hill Road, if you're going south on forty-three, before you get to the interstate, there's a road that turns back to the right. This Berry Hill Road, right before you get to the exit where you would go toward Tupelo. And that road circles all the way back around to County fifty-five. And fifty-five comes out behind Fulton Bridge Church, back in there. Fifty-five actually goes beside Fulton Bridge Church and then winds all the way back around and comes back out on thirty-five. But Berry Hill Road turns off of County fifty-five. And there's probably three maybe houses that would...
John's hood is a total of five, including the mobile home that's on his property that his daughter lived in. And there's possibility of picking up five customers that would run the water. I don't know the distance. Did you get it in the...
I did. I went to the address where Mr. Berry Hill questioned about and then went from there. The closest water we've got to that road is, or to that address is right at two miles. And at that point, the two mile point, we only have a two inch water line. So I mean, I told the mayor, pretty much where we stand right now, pretty much next to impossible to get him watered there without major construction. Possibly even putting in a pump station. But I just, I just wanted to bring this to y'all's attention in case you were addressed about it from Mr. Berry Hill or other...
I don't understand exactly what you're speaking of. I guess I'm a little dense on that. I thought I knew every road and number.
Berry Hill Road we're speaking of, you... Well, it says in the city limits, it said it runs... Doors Dr. Kerr used to live, part of it is.
This right here is, this is, this is forty-three going toward Hewitt.
Yeah.
Okay. You get down here, this, no, this is I-22. This is forty-three going toward Hewitt. This is the interstate. Berry Hill Road turns off right here off of forty-three, right before you get to the interstate. This is where you get on to go to Tupelo.
Okay, I got you now.
This is Berry Hill Road and it comes all the way around and comes back into fifty-five right here and comes all the way back here. And at this point, it's the closest point, we've actually got water, but it's across the highway on forty-three.
Yeah.
And there's, there's no way we can get water from there to here. Because one, we'd have to boil under that state highway and that ain't gonna happen because the state won't let us. And besides that, it's, like I said, it's on the opposite side of the highway.
Yeah, that could be forgotten.
So we, plus we would have to go across an overpass of that interstate and that ain't gonna happen either. So we would have to come in from this way and that's...
We don't even have that much water over there.
Mr. Berry Hill moved down there. He had a spring and a well and they both dried up to where he has hardly any water at all. And he says getting a well driller now is so uncertain that none of them will guarantee that they'll hit water if they grill. And some of the wells are real deep and mineral too when they get down there. So he's just asking the city if we could consider it. And I told Rodney to do a study on it. When he reported back to me, it just looked next to impossible with the two inch line being the only source of water. At the end of that two inch line, if we go two miles, the volume just won't be there to give that many pressure.
And the state requires us to have at least twenty pound of pressure at every meter.
That would never work.
I don't think we could have it.
As much as we'd like to give the service, Les and Cherry Waters lives down there. I don't know what kind of water source they have. And Ms. Renee Frederick lives down there, I believe. She's Jimmy Frederick's widow and I don't know who else that's got a house on that road there.
There's Holman Gann living in that neighborhood. Not on Berry Hill Road, but...
No, he's on fifty-five.
Yeah. I believe we got water past Roger, uh, down at the Burke's place. We got water goes past that, gone down to Hughes Road.
Hughes Road, yeah, that's the farthest it goes.
But we don't have a line with any volume that's a two inch line that services that. I don't, I just don't hardly know how we could do this and...
We just, we just kinda wanted y'all to be aware of the situation, if you've got questions about it or if anybody came to you wanting to know about it.
We, we didn't even take in consideration cost and that kind of thing. We just were seeing if it was possible to give that kind of service. We have not even thought about the expense side of it. That would be a big item if we were to start to figure that.
But what I have looked at is the difference in elevations from where our line is now and the pressure we have at our line now to the elevation of where this would be. It's quite a bit of difference of elevation. And that, that's your volume and your pressure, you know, that varies on elevation.
Yeah.
And that's, I think it's quite a bit higher elevation than where we are. And that's why we wouldn't have the volume and the pressure there.
Rodney will...
We wish everybody could have, but sometimes you can't.
Right now, we'll not try to put this on any agenda or anything. And I, I just don't, I don't see it as a doable thing at this time as, as much as we'd like to give the family the water. We'll let you move on to your next item then.
Next item is, I had one employee to resign his duties last week. Took another job and he left us last week. And I need, I need to post that as quickly as possible to replace him. Also, I've got one gonna be retired in about three to four months. And he is my construction foreman, Brian Lowden. He'll be retiring. And I've got a meter reader which wants to go back to construction once Brian leaves. So I would like to post a meter reading job because that position would take three to four months training to, to find out, to, to know the meter route. He's gonna have to go on that route three to four months to know where to go. So that's two jobs that I would like to post.
Rodney's losing a real substantial man off his construction crew that knows all the lines and where the valves are and things like that. I think Brian's made up his mind as soon as he gets his required time in to go ahead and retire, much as we hate to lose him.
Brian Lowden, yeah. Bobby Shaw.
He's kinda made it known that he intends to retire as soon as his eligibility comes up. So we'd need to put that on the agenda for Monday night to post a replacement worker and a trainee that will be able to go out and do the meter reading when we transfer Todd Galworth back over to construction.
And they're not, they're not only just meter readers. I mean, they, they help with construction also. They pull the call just like the construction guys do and they help out when they're not reading meters, they're doing other things.
We had lots of money. We'd like to put those meters in. You can drive by and pick up the reading off the little gizmo that you haul in the pickup. Right now, we've still gotta manually read those meters. Okay, I appreciate you letting us know about your personnel needs Rodney.
The next item is, I know Alan discussed with y'all on the budgets, on the sewer deficit, where our sewer department struggling, which I told the mayor, you can, you can ask any municipality in the state and they'll tell you they don't make money on sewer. You just can't charge enough to do it because it's so costly to do it. Uh, but I have read some numbers with the help of Ms. Sandra Lowden at the gas office. She took out tremendously list. I'll give y'all one of these and then I'll go over it with you and explain what it is. On the very first page, I looked at, I looked at several different options on how to, how to change things. And the first thing on the first page is a five percent water rate increase. That's if you went up five percent on water. Because now sewer is fifty percent of the water. Whatever the water is, the sewer is fifty percent of that. So this, all of these numbers are based on September eighteenth billing. This, we just took a month, an average month of billing and then we run these numbers by this monthly billing. So if we did a five percent water rate increase, if you look over to the right-hand column, one point oh five additional revenue, oh, that's what the increase would be per month on sewer and, and water. And that totals at the very, at the bottom, the eight, two, three, four. And you multiply that by twelve months and that'd give you the yearly increase. And then I, then I stopped and thought, you know, what would, what would happen if we just went up on sewer rates? So currently, on, on the bottom part of the first page, the proposed sewer increase, we started out at sewer at fifty percent, which that's currently what it is now. And then we did a, like a sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent of what it would be. And, and that's what, that's the numbers we came out with on the yearly increase. Then the next page, I wanna step further.
Let me ask you a question. I don't know much about, is this, which would be the most money on the increase? By just increasing this up here with the six thousand seven thirty-seven or down here to go and increase the sewer and sewer water? Which one would bring, would bring... You're not talking about doing both of them?
No, no.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Which one is the biggest increase in income?
Well, of course, the biggest increase would be the five percent water rate increase, raising the least amount of percent raise and the most money.
Yeah.
But...
That's what I, that's what I was thinking.
But you've got people that aren't getting the sewer, paying for the deficit in the sewer department.
Yeah. And, and I even, on the second page, I even went a step further. Broke it down in commercial sewer and residential sewer. And the numbers I came up with there, uh, the, right below the box, it says total increase. That's, that's the total numbers with going up six, to sixty percent, seventy percent or eighty percent. And then you multiply that out times twelve months to get your yearly increase. What I did, I went back and started checking around, see what other systems you can do with sewer. And you know, right now, we're at fifty percent of the water bill. Whatever the water bill is, we're fifty percent sewer. I checked with Solage. Solage is, on residential sewer, they're at sixty percent. On commercial sewer, they're at eighty percent. Eighty percent of whatever the commercial water bill is, that's what the sewer is. And I checked with Halable. Halable is sixty percent residential, ninety percent commercial. And Winfield is a hundred percent across the board. Whatever your water bill is, that's what you, how much you pay in sewer.
Pretty big lick there, isn't it?
Now their, their minimum bill is a little bit lower than ours, on their water bill. So I mean, for the zero to two thousand gallons, that's a minimum. They're at like sixteen dollars and we're about twenty-one. But that's why they, they balance it out fifty-fifty, you know, whatever your water bill is, that's what your sewer bill is. So yeah, does it by the, by the gallons of water used. For the first two thousand gallons fed, charges seventeen fifty for sewer. That's zero to two thousand gallons. And I broke ours down and said, okay, our minimum bill is zero to two thousand gallons. And ours is half of the water bill. So our sewer is for two thousand gallons is ten nineteen, where theirs is seventeen fifty. So basically, we're the, we're the cheapest in the place in sewer. Now our water, our water rates are right, right there in the middle, well, average of what other systems are. But our sewer is lower than anybody's.
Sewer is expensive though, right?
It is expensive. As y'all know, my power bill at the sewer plant averages about thirteen thousand dollars a month. And at the water plant, it averages about ten thousand a month.
What, what do you, what are you recommending?
Well, I'm gonna step further down here at the bottom. Just because other system did it, I, I pulled, I put taxing numbers in as residential at sixty percent, commercial at eighty percent and got that total and did the yearly increase on it. And that's like a hundred thirty-four thousand seven oh nine. Keep in mind, these are all average numbers because this is an average month. It won't be exactly these numbers, but it'll be close on a yearly basis.
Alan pointed out in our budget discussion that one of our large item losses is our sewer operation. We, we just decided we need to do some research on it and see what, how we measure up with other entities around us, other companies around us, cities. And we're way cheap on our sewer compared to everybody around us.
I heard of one system, I can't remember where it was, but their, their sewer bill is double what the water bill is. Exactly. Whether it be water bill fifty dollars or sewer a hundred.
Well, if we go up, are you recommending going up five percent? Is that what it was?
That was, that was on, that was on the water rate increase, but...
Oh. Do we need a water increase too beside the sewer? Or are you just gonna do a water increase to help make up for the sewer?
Well...
In other words, all your water people are gonna be paying for people's sewer, everybody will pay their own.
Exactly. I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree really with making everybody suffer that don't have sewer.
Yeah, right.
But I think if you have sewer, you ought to pay for it. I mean, it ought to be, it ought to be fair. I mean, that's, that's the thing we need to figure out, what's the fairest way to do it?
And probably, I'm assuming that your commercial, the commercial people are using more sewer than the residential. So in theory, there should be more than the residential.
Are they not?
Yes, most of them are.
They're not paying more.
But they're not paying more now.
Oh, I thought that, that's what I wondered if the...
The only ones that are paying more is, is the ones, because we went back and, and you know, broke it down by meter size. You know, if you've got a two inch meter, you're being charged more than a three-quarter inch meter. You know, you're being charged more water, therefore you're being charged more sewer. But you know, not every business has got a two inch meter. A lot of them has just a three-quarter inch meter.
I think we should do this. I think we should do one percent on water annually. Don't, not that we have to sit and vote and just put that in a clause. That helps us take care of wearing out equipment and changing chemical costs and manpower and everything else that we've gotta have, equipment. I think we need to, well, our water is, is not at a break even. But if we tweaked it just a little bit a year till we got it to break even, you know, it would be nice. Rodney wants that. He wants his, he wants his water department to break even on their water operation. We probably can't ever get the sewer to wear the paper itself, but we can help ourselves in that area if we tweak it a little bit. So I'd like to recommend that we do one percent per year going forward with water and then adjust our rates on commercial sewer to where we see it helped on the override of this high cost of operation. We, we, we're never gonna pay for our sewer operation, as you said. Towns just don't break even, but we're, we're going in the hole so bad right now, it's, it needs some help.
Well, you got to, see, the thing with that is if you don't go up, you know, your labor's going up every year and everything that it takes to operate, that system is going up every year. It's not staying the same.
The last time we increased water, since we've been in office, it'd been eleven years since we made an adjustment. So that's why we had to go in that direction. But we need to build something in where it's annual and we, you know, we don't have to bring it up and, and vote on it every time. It's an automatic thing. And otherwise, we're gonna, our equipment's gonna wear out. We're gonna need a lot of things done and we would not know how to have any money to pay for it with. And it's just, it's just that we've got, we've got to have a little more for our water operation, both ways, the purification and the sewer.
Well, you know, the chemicals and everything's going up every year. There's no question. I mean, and it can be helped. I mean, regardless of people...
He was forced to make a change in what we purify water with. He couldn't even get the chemical that was usable. All he could get is lumpy lines and that was the basis for our purification. And we've had to go to a different chemical within the last twelve months to purify our water. And with verdicts not in yet as to whether it's gonna cost more or less, we'll see based on a year's operation.
It costs more upfront, but it, it takes less of it to treat the water. So they, they're claiming we're gonna save a little money in the end, but we'll see in a year's time.
We're gonna put a measure stick to that and see. We don't have a track record on that yet.
But we can't keep going in the hole on it, as I'm sure. And I know we've probably been going backwards, like you say, for the last ten, fifteen years because we hadn't raised the rates. We know everything's going up, labor and materials that go in.
Well, we, we helped, we helped the water department a good bit by the increase we made. But it didn't catch us up with the years that had passed since we'd raised it. But...
What do you recommend? I said, well, I saw Rodney the same thing. Huh?
I don't know.
You got sewer on your side?
But I don't, I don't wanna pay for somebody else's sewer.
Well, how you gonna pay for it if you don't have it?
I don't wanna have to pay for somebody else's sewer.
That's nice. You don't want it in your doorstep.
I know.
Well, you, you haven't got anything to worry about if we go up on the sewer, if you don't have sewer.
But if you go up across...
Well, if we go up on the water, the water's losing money too. I mean, if you use water, city water, don't you? And, and we're not doing no good there either. That's the problem. We're not, that department, it's, it's just hard to... And help people can afford it too.
And the biggest problem was it, it was so many years in there that they didn't do any increases.
Right.
And that's what got us in the hole.
But I believe we could really make some improvements and not, not actually increase it tremendously in each department. A one percent increase on water annually is not gonna be a huge change in a person's bill.
A lot of systems do that, just to cover the cost of the chemical, yeah, they do it one percent every year, every year's a one percent increase.
I talked to one man that superintendent over a, a water department, he said they'd been doing that for years. And it's just built in their.
Why don't you just give them a year and work us out it? What do you think we need to raise it to? No, we gotta raise it.
Yeah, you can't keep on going, you can't, you know.
With y'all's permission, we'll find tune this and, and come back with a proposal. We've, we won't have this on Monday night's agenda, but maybe a couple of meetings down the way, we'll come back to this. Rodney, you got anything else you wanna add?
I think that's it for me.
Um, they had a tremendous problem down around the. Uh lower end of town with grease back in the sewer lines over the weekend. He had a man that worked seventy dollars trying to clear the trunk lines of grease. Somebody's pumping pure grease into our, our sewer lines and, and they're not, they're not built to handle that. And he's trying to find the sewers, he thinks he knows it, but. Nobody's stressing up.
Yeah, they got, the mental call got called about the third play of Alabama football game.
He didn't enjoy that, did he?
But they had to work a long time and. He may still have to get a professional pumping crew to come in here that can handle grease. And get that grease out of the trunk lines, it's, it's really bad.
It's like haunts, yeah, big haunts of grease.
The ones he addressed said, we got a grease trap. We think there's another source there where they're putting some through a grease trap and some maybe don't go through the grease trap. We believe we've pinned on a source of grease, but it's coming. No admissions at this point. Uh, item two on our, on our list is uh Highway seventeen sidewalk project. I was notified by Mr. Webb from DOT at Fayetteville. Uh, this is the month we've got to decide whether or not we're gonna. Use that grant money and it'll need to be on Monday night's agenda to vote. You vote your heart, whatever you feel about this project, I'm not gonna try to say to you one way or the other. Uh, we got the grant uh available, it's, it is a, a match grant, eighty twenty. And there's, looks like it's gonna be about thirty one thousand dollars of additional. Uh side costs besides our twenty percent. Um, for engineering and surveying and what have you, so.
Is this, what's this for the sidewalk, you talking about building to the rec center?
Yeah, but we've got to decide, if we're not gonna use that money, I've got to write a letter to the state and turn the grant money back to them. Where they can give it to some other county.
How much, how much money is it actually gonna cost the city to build that sidewalk?
About seventy thousand dollars.
Well, we could build a sidewalk for that.
That's uh.
It's expensive to draw it in there too.
Well, it's, it's based on what this piece of paper, the part of the grant was forty four thousand, our part of the grant.
Yeah.
And then this is a little over thirty five thousand, but this doesn't include the acquisition of the land. Or any of the additional services which are gonna be the professional services, so uh. And I didn't understand, this doesn't actually include the work, this is just the paperwork, is that correct? This doesn't include what either the city's gonna have to do. Mike's department's gonna have to do or we're gonna have to hire somebody to do, is that correct?
Uh, we, we promised a little bit of drainage improvement over there for the back of their lot that tends to hold water.
And that's not included in this?
No, we'll use our equipment and, and we'll be out some fuel and, and labor costs.
And Mike's confident that we can do that?
I tell you, I, 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 I get ripped off and don't know it. Well, it don't hurt yours bad, but when I'm getting ripped off and know I'm getting ripped off, that hurts.
No.
And I pull the sidewalk, I, I can't believe it, it takes seventy thousand dollars, much less. We're talking eighty percent of there and just twenty percent of ours, and it's gonna be seventy to build a five foot sidewalk. Let them out of construction. Are, are, is, is that gonna actually be worth that to us, is what I'm wondering too. I, I, I just wonder how many people are gonna use that, you know, if, if. Because that's expensive, we can do a lot of things with that much money to have maybe more feet. What about the bus that there's gonna run over there? Is it gonna run a bus from school or?
When I talked with the bus station, they said that as soon as the recreation center was open, that the bus would go there. So, there, there will be bus transportation from the middle school to the recreation center.
I will have a part of it right there. I, I think, just my own opinion, whatever y'all decide, I'll not be. But I think we need to slow down on spending here for a while because. We, we get some more money coming in. It seems to me that what we've got ahead of us right now is a lot, you know, and it's. It's more important than some of this stuff here. Because we, we got a lot of expense in front of us for the next year that we've already committed to.
Mr. Webb indicated that he had given me a form letter to turn this money back in. He said the state, since they granted it to us and we requested it. They'd be a little upset with us if we didn't properly turn it back to them, so we need to get it on the agenda and get a vote in. If we, if we're not gonna use the money, we need to tell them so, and so they can probably award it to someone else that didn't get grant. This year that needed one.
Well, what do y'all think about it? What, what, you know, I, I just don't know whether. I hate to see money turned back in still, so what it's gonna.
Kind of high price sidewalk.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We'll, we'll get that on the agenda and. We've uh, we got three things to vote on involve street closings. Monday night and we'll need to. We'll need to be prepared to vote. I've got word in to Scott again today, asking him. Uh, if you guys can vote on like one that involves the church, the Baptist church.
Yeah, I'm believing that.
He's contacting the ethics committee again, they haven't responded to him and. He said he'd be in touch with him this afternoon for a ruling. So you guys probably are not gonna be voting. I think the only one that'll vote on that particular one is myself, but we gotta have, have a quorum of people there. And you'll all have to abstain, is what I think on that particular one.
So, uh, on the one over in the subdivision, did all the legalities get straightened out? And is Scott gonna present that and tell us exactly who owns it and who doesn't? And then the one at the Methodist church, has all that street been worked out? And are they willing to give up part of their uh playground so we can actually make the street? So it's gonna handle the traffic, is all that gonna be presented?
I, I won't make a suggestion on that since you're at right now. Uh, that playground down there that we're speaking of. If we had, I was down there today and I looked at it in front of the barber shop and all, that street that goes through there. If they'd give us ten to twelve feet, move their fence up ten to twelve feet to make that street wider down through there. It would be, because we're gonna be giving them about fifty feet.
Well, that's what I'm asking, are they gonna come and, have the negotiations already been made and Scott's gonna present it? Or, I mean, how's this gonna work?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Scott to uh approach them about the land. Because he knows a lot more about land, his dad was a surveyor. I want him to clear that air with, with the Methodist, I think we need some of their land. In, in exchange for what we're gonna be giving up from the city's si- standpoint.
But I think we're, I mean, we're gonna have to have a plan before that's ever closed. We're gonna have to be able to accommodate the trucks and the traffic. The way I see it, it's gonna have to be a process and, you know, we're gonna have to, to have the road in place. Before we close what they're requesting, or how else are we gonna, so Scott's gonna present this, that's my question?
Yes, he will be there to present.
And then with the First Baptist property, uh. Safety was one of the concerns, but then when questioned about if the road was gonna be closed or not. I was under the impression that we're gonna leave it open, but uh. Chief and I've discussed it and, and I've discussed it with some other people and if that road is left open. If we just vacate it and it's left open, that's not gonna, I mean, that's not gonna help with any safety issues. So, are they gonna, is the church gonna close one end?
Well, they met again with these uh church planners, uh, they flew in from Florida. Thursday night and met again with the, with the official board of the church. They're planning to put a building in that road.
Right, but I mean, in the meantime, because it's my understanding that once we vacate the property, it becomes private property like a parking lot. The police will have no control over the through traffic, so if it's left both ends open. It's just gonna be more dangerous than it is now.
They can close the road in which way.
I would say the end closest to the old city hall.
I say though, they could close both ends if they want to, it'll be theirs then. They don't have a through traffic, you don't have a building sitting on it.
But until the building's built.
Well, just close both ends, because it'd be closed then anyway.
Well.
They'll be used to going up and down those other roads.
Well, that's a possibility.
You know, I, for me, it's only a possibility.
Until the uh. The parking lot access, I can see how with one end closed, you could come in there. The gas office through the parking lot and then out this end of the street and just make it one way. For drop offs. Or I don't know what the plan is.
Um. I, I don't know either, Tammy, I really don't, and uh. I don't, the request was for us to vacate the street, I'm, I was assuming that. Uh, they would handle that end of it, but I, I don't, I can't promise that.
We got, I mean, the Methodist, the Methodist church said that yes, they would close.
Yeah, they did.
One end of theirs.
Yeah.
So.
They're, they're gonna immediately do it.
Right.
But. I don't have the, the clearance on, on the Baptist side as far as whether they'll immediately close it. I, I guess by request of the city, they would.
Well, I bet you the Methodist church, church, the only thing changed at Methodist church would be, be giving them that road. That's coming down through there, you know, it'd be stopped up. And they'd just move their fence up every how much it took, ten or twelve feet to have a two lane road going down in front of those businesses down through there. I mean, they should be glad to give up on the buy and not have that road separating their.
Yeah.
Playground and church from.
That would be like the north end of their property, we'll need some land on the north end, across the north end of their property.
Right. No, it would go in front, uh, the road comes in on the east.
Maybe on the east side.
It, it'd go in front of those businesses that are down there at Pete's.
Oh.
The barber shop, their fence down through there. So they just fix that road, so it's gonna down, come out.
Utilities because there's a power pole sitting.
I was thinking about widening that street that goes into the. I didn't know.
Front of the church.
Would, yeah, no, that goes on, I don't know, what's that called, the north side of the property that. That gets over to those, that line of buildings that's got the cap in on.
We're talking about this road down here. This is coming down to you, the church is sitting right here. There's the restaurant and the barber shop, or beauty shop, and all that, we're talking about down here.
Yeah, we're talking about down here in front of this, right here, their, their fence down here. If they'd move it up about twelve feet, ten or twelve feet, and that'd make this road plenty wide enough for traffic going down and go out down that way.
And these poles will have to be moved, these utility poles and.
Yeah, but that would be better than, I can't see anything else as being any better.
Because right now, the way it is, you couldn't have two, two lines of traffic.
Oh, you can't have two lanes of traffic.
This is where we're moving.
I was looking at it down there today, it's in front of that, you know where it is down there, in front of there. In the barber shop there.
Two lanes of traffic, there's just one.
There's no, it's not wide enough.
So to handle.
Traffic can be part of the two.
This and to handle this, we're gonna have to have more.
Twelve feet up and that would settle, then the traffic that ran out.
Back, backing up would be a problem.
Yeah, if it didn't. Yeah, oh yeah, you couldn't, well, you, you, you got one lane.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about laying off that end of this property where it comes back to forty three. Like this comes to forty three, there's another street down here that comes to forty three. I was thinking about widening that road, I didn't know we was talking about widening this road.
Well, it may have to be widened too, because I think that's where the culvert's in and the hole, yeah.
Just past that lane that you're talking about that comes in front of Pete's buildings, to the right is where that thing is falling in, I think.
There's gonna be a pretty good little bit of work that's gonna have to be done down here before this can be closed. In order to hold the traffic or handle the traffic.
Okay. Well, we, we need to clear that air with the, with the folks and make sure they're willing to do a trade.
Yeah.
Because they might not be willing, they might rather keep their land than, than have this road closed.
They're gonna gain a lot more than they're gonna lose. That road's about fifty foot wide, I noticed it today, I was looking at it down to forty, fifty foot. That the street is wide, more than wide is a street coming off of the forty three down through there. That they're gonna be getting, and all they're gonna be doing is just moving their playground up ten or twelve feet, whatever it is, make another lane. They're gonna be gaining more than they're losing and they're gonna stop the traffic coming between their church like the Baptist church has got too, you know.
Yeah, okay. Uh. I'm, I'm not sure that, that we have a full explanation before that comes to a vote. Of, of all the places that we're involved with and. We, we're just about whether y'all vote or not, it's about whether you understand what's gonna happen when we vote.
Yes, right.
We'll, we'll bring all that to light before we bring it to a vote. Uh. The chief and, and Jimmy have uh, uh, some information today they wanna discuss with us. Uh, this is, has come up out of a need, I understand, that's going on in the department. Who's your spokesman, you gonna talk chief?
Yes, sir, I'm on initiating and then he's gonna give us the technical computerized IT side of it. And we've been trying to work with, with this bunch here for the last couple of months. Because we've got some cameras, our body cameras, we've got like three going down right now. And due to the fact we've got a man shortage, you know, we're even, we're treading water evenly right now. But uh, when we get back up to Paul, we're gonna be short some cameras. And this day and age is kinda like when we got our cameras, we initiated them in April of two thousand thirteen. And this was prior to Ferguson Missouri incident, where we could buy these things for like three hundred fifty dollars a piece. Once that happened and then a couple more incidents happened and they sent the importance of body cameras. And they, they threw this stuff out there on the market and immediately the prices went to eight, nine hundred, thousand dollars a piece. You know, it was, it was their, their price to ask for whatever they wanted for. Well, over that period of time, the technology is in. Well, over that period of time, the technology has increased. Some of these things can, and some of the troopers in our area use the same thing that we do, except they use the upgraded version of it. Some of the way that it's mounted to your shirt has changed different to so that it's more secure. Some of the activation features of it is more secure. These guys can take, as soon as they hit the blue light switch on their cars, it activates their cameras if they're using it in that type of situation. And our technology and everything is five years old. If we send these things back for refurbished, we're not gonna pay but just a few more pennies for newer model than we are to get these things refurbished and we don't get no kind of guarantee on refurbished stuff. But with all that said, we've got, we've been presented with a plan of two thousand eighteen prices. They won't be here in two thousand nineteen and they're offering us an Exxon. We are currently with them. We've had great satisfaction with their product. We've had no problem with it. We've seen some of the new stuff that they have and we believe that they've really upgraded their technology. So with that in mind, I'm gonna take, Jimmy take over and explain what we've negotiated with them.
Right now, we currently have thirteen body cameras, uh, with them. If you'll look at, uh, the first line, uh, where it says basic one year payment eleven at a hundred eighty dollars, that's, uh, the licensing fee for each unit, for each officer to be able to submit their video for evidence. Each officer has a license with Exxon, which means they have a username and stuff. And, uh, so we have eleven of those, then we have two that are pro models that are at four hundred sixteen dollars a piece. One of those is for Scotty and myself who are the evidence techs when it comes to the, uh, submission of the video and everything else. Where we can pull it up, record, we can distribute it to the state or DA's office, whoever. But, uh, right now, we're already in a contract with, uh, Exxon for the, uh, uh, storage and everything through evidence dot com and that's with our handheld, uh, tasers and stuff. What this will do is it'll do away with that contract that we have as far as on the evidence dot com side of it. And we're issued a new contract for the next five years. Uh, this is a five year plan. Uh, you pay for the unit over five years and at two and a half years, we'll get another unit. Instead of having to wait five years from here, have it back. At two and a half years, we'll distribute it to another unit, which will be the newer upgraded version that comes out in two thousand nineteen, which is Exxon three. This is Exxon two. Uh, the quote is four. Um, if I'm on a traffic stop and Chief pulls up and he turns his on, I already have one on, they automatically sync together and you'll get two different views at, running at the same time, uh, when it's uploaded. So if you got five officers on the scene, the DA wants to see what's going on, he can look at five different views at the same time. It's up to sixteen capabilities, so he can watch six, sixteen different capability, or different view, uh, with this new unit that's going, with the new unit, the two, Exxon two. Currently, we have the one. Uh, Chief has said they, uh, refurbished. She told me they will not refurbish anything. You just have to purchase the new twos. That, uh, they're out of warranty, so we can't even send them in to be fixed, but they no longer make the ones. Uh, on here, you'll also see a docking station down to very bottom of the, the first page, the, uh, six bay docking station at, uh, fourteen hundred ninety-five dollars. That price is waived the first year. And then they pick it up after that and I think it's three thirty-six a year under the docking station plan, payment plan. So the first year is waived and then from then on out, we'll begin to pay. But after the five years.
Explain what the docking station is, that we currently don't have that.
Yeah, no, we don't, we currently don't have a docking station. What it is now is we currently have a charging cable that we can also come to the computer and upload our videos. Um, it uploads it so slow, which Wayne can understand this, it uploads so slow to keep it in H P version of everything, so the, the picture's very good. If we try to get something to upload it faster on one cable, it's, it's gonna distort the video. So what they do is they have a docking station where you, the officer can come in, sit in the docking station, it automatically begins upload. It knows, the camera knows who the owner is. It automatically throws it to his, uh, name and everything else under evidence dot com, so we won't have to sit there. Currently, we go in, log in, plug the wire up, begin to upload it. You have to wait for it to upload. It may take, if you have four thirty minute videos, it may take you thirty to forty-five minutes. They have to do that to end of every shift. Well, if we get the docking station, they come in, lock it in, it automatically starts uploading because it's hooked into, uh, evidence dot com and puts it under that officer's name because of the unit number that he's assigned. So it just, it makes things a lot easier and better as far as that. If we done, if we bought them outright right now, uh, they're six ninety-nine a piece, uh, seven hundred bucks basically. And, uh, we would pay, still pay for evidence dot com, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the licensing agreements for each officer, which is about fifty-five hundred and forty-one dollars a year for evidence dot com, the licensing for each officer.
How much?
Fifty-five hundred and forty-one dollars for the evidence dot com that we use.
For every officer?
No, 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 that's for per year. That's every officer and all licenses included under that one year.
Evidence dot com is a database.
Yeah.
That all of our information goes to is held there.
And we can complete total cases, paperwork and all, submit all that to evidence dot com. The DA's office can pull it off of theirs 'cause they have a, uh, evidence dot com also capabilities where they pull the whole file and have it right there at their hand and we never have to take them, a file no more. You know, and, uh, Scott's looking at doing that right now with evidence dot com, so maybe it'll set a precedence for other off, or for other agencies to also maybe swap over this to where it makes the, uh, evidence exchange a lot better from paperwork exchange. But if we pay for it outright, sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for all the units and the licensing agreements for the first year. After that, it's five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars for year two, year two through five. So the next four years basically at a total of about thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, for that. If we do a disagreement, the total of it will be forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. They also send us an extra unit. If we have one mess up, we take that extra unit, officer pops it on, we take his unit, send it back, they send us another one free. So, and that's for the duration of the time. So at two and a half years, we get a new unit, uh, and at, uh, anytime within the five year period, one tears up, it's in the bag, they send us another one. And like Chief said, uh, everybody is looking at, officers now have to have body cams.
So we got a TASER contract now that we pay annually?
Well, Exxon is donor of TASER. It used to be TASER dot com or TASER International. They've changed the name now to Exxon. And, uh, Exxon now owns TASER as far as the actual, uh, E and D deployment weapons, what we carry. We have a evidence dot com through that program that we have right now, a TAP program where we're paying for them yearly. It's almost up as well. Our contract with them's almost up as well. So it's gonna do away with that evidence dot com that we're currently paying for and switch to this program, which we go five years.
But we get a rebate back on what we have left over from the other point.
Yes, we'll have a rebate and plus the savings of eight thousand, fifty-two dollars in discounts because if you look at the, let's see what line it is.
How many more arrests does each officer gonna have to make to pay for this?
None.
Or how much more time they're gonna have to put in there to establish the rest or something?
Actually, it's gonna put officers back on the street quicker because of the docking station in the, the, in the squadron. The download and put it in the computer gets you back out on the street faster.
Does that mean he's gonna catch more people and tape you? Not me, I, I know, don't go out there and tell them I said something like that.
There's, there's always a probability of it, but the thing about it is, is this assurance what the officers have now with complaints coming in, not necessarily on our officers, I'm just talking nationwide, all the complaints and all these complaints being debunked, you know, because all those officers have body cams on. And, you know, a lot of departments will say, okay, they said this happened and this is what actually happened. They'll put it out there on internet, which we don't. It's in our policy. We don't share our video except through criminal court purposes only.
And this, when we first went to body cameras, I was here a year before, we went to these body cameras and just the frugal complaints, you know, that we hear all the time dropped eighty percent as soon as we made it known by the newspaper and everything that we had body cameras on as well. And if I say something, okay, I, I got a complaint, okay, I'm gonna get the video pulled up on that and, you know. Well, I just don't want to let you know, I don't wanna get nobody in trouble, I just wanna let you know, you know.
What about the battery? I understand that with the current cameras that you're using now, there's a problem with them being on all the time because there's not enough battery line.
Battery power, these are two day batteries, so they'll.
Okay, so, so there's not gonna be a problem with the cameras being on the entire shift?
No, no, there won't be no problem with that. Plus, under the docking station, it's also recharging at the same time. Officer can actually come in and leave his unit and then come back in the beginning of next shift, pop it on, be ready to go, it's fully charged. And that might have a lot to do with his officer, you know, charging this unit and stuff when he's at home and if he forgets to charge it. If you put it in the docking station and he leaves work, it's automatically uploading that video, plus it's charging that unit. So when the next shift he comes back in, we have it, which is a six bay docking unit, so six of them can be in there at one time.
And if we synchronize these with our blue lights, anytime, you know, that their adrenaline get pumped or whatever, when they get the call, if they don't hit the button immediately, when they do hit the, the lights, you put the lights on, then this thing's gonna automatically come on.
But you're saying that it can stay on all the time?
Well, they will.
Well, as far as video all the time, no. It can stay in standby mode with the power button on. It cannot stay on all the time in record because first off, uh, if you'll see on the one line where it says, uh, eight five oh three five, evidence dot com storage, we pay right now for three and a half terabytes. Okay, we pay seventy-five cents per, per whatever it is, I'm not sure exactly, but at two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for our storage fee for the year. Okay, a lot of these people right now have the body cams where you can upload, where nobody's holding their storage, so they're putting them to their own terabytes to office.
It is expensive.
I tried that one time and you can ask Wayne.
It's expensive.
You can try that, but you can't find the video. There's on a video right now that my officer reports that I can't find. If it's recorded, I can find it because it's strictly to that officer. All I have to know is the date of the offense or the date of the complaint or whatever it is, the incident, and I can bring it up right then. I can see if he recorded and I can see if he didn't record. And if he says, oh, I tried to record but it didn't work, no. You didn't turn it on. If it's not on there, you didn't turn it on. But if it is on there, we're able to watch it. And any given time, three years down the road, or our felony cases right now, I can bring up a case from three years ago that's a felony case to present in, uh, not necessarily to the grand jury, but for a trial. We can present that because we still have that video. Try finding a terabyte hard drive, okay, let's see, what year is this? It's, it's gonna do a lot of, a lot of manpower, or not manpower, but man hours trying to find a certain video, you know. Cause they're not labeled. They are labeled on here.
But they will stay on the entire shift. They just won't record.
Yes.
A hundred percent of the shift, but by doing this or just reaching and tapping them, they immediately come on and they back up thirty seconds.
Well, I know when, when y'all first got these, it was pointed out that they can help you as much as they can hurt you or they can hurt you as much as they can help you. And I know I get a lot of complaints just like y'all do about the officer speeding through town, maybe no lights on, but just... And a lot of it was the motors in the car and how it sounded. Sometimes it was actually speeding. Oh, so if it's not gonna come on till the lights come on, if they don't have their lights on, we're still not, you see what I'm saying?
No, this though.
Whereas if it was on all the time.
Not every call requires, you know, lights and sirens.
Right, so.
A lot of them do, but if the bank's being off, do you want us to come to lights and sirens, a bank man, or do you want us to come in silently?
Right.
Then I'd know.
But if you run over somebody getting there.
Yeah.
Was the camera on or was the camera off because the lights weren't on?
Yeah.
So see, it's a double edge. If, if, if the camera came on when the call came in, to me, that would be ideal. You get the call on your radio, the camera comes on. Everything that happens from the time the call comes in till you end the call is gonna be recorded.
But on that, the only thing you're gonna view is the inside of the car. You're not gonna view anything else except the inside of the car, cause where the body cam sits and where it faces, you're gonna get the radio and stuff. But you'll, you'll hear the talking and everything else. You're not gonna see necessarily what's taking place.
So you're not gonna see.
Actual car cameras is where, and, and they sell them also. No, but they sell them also, which all sync up to the same, like if I turn this on, that camera comes on. Or if I turn the blue lights on, that comes on, this comes on. It, the technology's so great right now, but you're looking at twenty-two hundred and fifty to twenty-five hundred, a hundred dollars per unit, uh, just to put those in the car. And in the long run, yeah, they can, they can be very good, you know, especially if, uh, you get in litigation, you get a couple hundred thousand dollars lawsuit.
We still think about what we can afford.
Is this what you're talking about, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars a year?
No, that's over a five year period.
Okay, it's just eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven a year?
Yeah, each year is that price.
Y'all ought to be able to make that up on fine. And then we have a, a small equipment line item in our budget. That's what gets put in there for tasers and body cameras and stuff like that.
Well, I'm, I'm, if that's what you say you need and what we left the city, well, it'd be worth it and I'd be for it. Cause I know how the world's getting that. See that on TV every day. I wouldn't go out there.
Now, anyway.
If you think you need it, I.
I think it'd be very beneficial to have a department.
Yeah.
And the city.
Well, even with video, you still have to maintain the chain of custody and this, this maintains the chain of custody. Unlike uploading it to a personal hard drive or something like that, which is beneficial when it goes to court. Just for, for officers handling.
Oh, yeah. And the, and the thing about it is that any given time, uh, for my video, nobody can go back in, they cannot edit this video or anything else. The video can only be edited by the, uh, uh, two people who are the evidence technicians. And if it is edited, it timestamp, said it was edited at this point or whatever, but it also saves the original video as well. So if you're wanting a condensed version, like you just say, you know, what happened at the end of this traffic stop, I can burn from the end of that traffic stop and bring it and show you this, or I can show you the whole thirty minute video. Either way, but it timestamp everything and it keeps that chain of evidence to a T, so.
It's just upgrading your police work.
Yes, it's something out there.
When you get questioned about something, you got more evidence.
It's bringing us from, it's bringing us up the whole road cameras to digital cameras now.
The, um, the unfortunate thing where police are concerned is when you get one of these versions, you get the edited version that just shows the police in the role.
It shows the tail end of the incident. We show the front end.
Where the police had to take them down physically or something like this and then it's pointed out that, well, there's automatic brutality and there's over aggression by the police officer. If they so brought you to that point of having to do that, I think that that's important. So, you know, we, I think we need the entire story every time.
Yes, sir.
If there's an incident. Uh, well, we appreciate y'all bringing that into us and citing us on where we at. Now, only, on the ones that we own now, there's no chance that any portion of that couldn't be marketed to some other department at some smaller town.
We'll be returning them back to you.
Yeah, we, we'll return them back and what they do is discount the ones that remain.
Okay.
And then, and then they will be, what, what evidence will be holding on them right now will be totally wiped out.
Okay.
The, uh, at the top, you'll see the yellow quote expiration, eleven thirty eighteen. These prices are only good through that date. Each and the first, the prices are going up.
I see.
So we can lock in that price that we have right now and that, because the prices of the new units coming out next year are gonna be a couple hundred dollars more. So if we lock in this price, in five years, we'll still be able to get this same price if we do it again. So we'll be guaranteed this lower price in five years.
We got one shot to get it under the wire and that's to put it on the night tank agenda.
It's the reason I had to come in so late because we just, just, I mean, the ink is just dried on something that's big or here.
I see. Okay, man, we thank y'all for coming in.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate this and I hope we can find enough of funds to, to accommodate you guys. We appreciate the job y'all do for us and with the public and.
Thank you, sir.
I think our P R is coming along with the public. I, I, I don't have the complaints about the department that I've had in months past. In the last six months, it's been fairly quiet.
We've had our ups and downs this past year, but we're working on it.
Well, we appreciate peace and harmony in our city.
Agreed.
We'd all like to have it.
Oh, yeah, sir. Thank y'all.
Y'all take that list that I gave you for consideration and we'll try to act on that Monday night, okay? And, uh, we'll have to have, of course, nomination or nominations to be able to vote on someone, but those are the people who put their name in the pot. You guys got anything else that you wanna discuss at this table today? And I'll try to have all those matters of real estate cleared up so we won't be voting in the dark, so to speak, on those street closures.
And, um, with all the, the legal stuff in that, in the subdivision, who, who paid for all that? Did, did the individual that requested the street to be closed and did he pay for all the legal finding out all this, or did the city do that?
I haven't done any work. Now, Scott's met with him a couple of times. I'd, I'd like to find out what they arranged. But, uh, I didn't promise to absorb any costs.
Well, I just, I wondered, you know, if it was, if he's the one that's providing the information or Scott, if the city was the one that was having.
Okay, alright, I was gonna go get something.
To provide all that information.
I was gonna go get something deep for it.
I'll try to find out about that too.
Okay.
The way I understand it, on that particular thing, might be two deeds made. Uh, fifty-fifty split on that land, two, two landowners.
Yeah.
Mister Williams and Mister Jewel will split that piece of land. There's the two adjacent owners. Joe Williams and, uh.
Yeah, my notes just say that there was a title issue and that somebody might already own the property. From what Scott said at the meeting the other night. So obviously, that's been worked out. We know that we don't know. Okay, Scott will tell us Monday.
That's the first I knew about a title problem.
Well, those were just my notes from the other night, title issue. And we needed to know if it was either owned by the Caysons or if it was a city street. So it was a possibility that somebody already owned it. So that's why I'm asking who did the, if, did the city, did Scott do the work to find out? Or did, did, um, Mister Jewel have the work done? As long as somebody tells me Monday night if it's owned or if it's a city street, we'll be all right.
Okay. Well, if we abandon it, uh, we better own it, ain't we?
Right.
Well, we'll find out for sure. If, if there is a question, we won't vote on that matter Monday night. If there's a title problem and, and a question of ownership, whether the city owns it or not, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna vote against something we don't own.
Right. That's why I was asking who did the, those were just my notes from, from when we had the public hearing, from what Scott said.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure those questions get answered before there's any votes on the table. But it'll be on the agenda, but we'll not vote on any issue that there's questions on. I'll not force it to a vote. We'll table it. Thank y'all for coming today. It's just a beautiful day outside with the ducks.